Like to call this meeting to order. Welcome to tonight's meeting. Um, let's see. First, Veronica, please call the roll. I almost said Vanessa. Veronica, please call the roll.
Chair Fleming?
Here.
Vice Chair Davis?
Here.
Trustee, Treasurer DeVarty?
DeVarty, here.
Secretary Hatcher?
Here.
Trustee McKnight Morton?
Here.
Trustee Peck?
Here.
Thank you. Do I hear a motion to approve the agenda?
No.
Thank you. Any discussion on this yet? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. All right. Moving on to public comments. I don't think I got any public comments registered. Are there any public comments tonight? No. Okay. All right. Let's move on to the financial aid profiles. At this time, Provost Blakey and VP Jennings will present the annual financial aid and fall profiles.
So tonight, we're going to talk about the annual 2425 student profile. We'll also talk about the profile for fall 2025. And then VP Jennings will also cover the financial aid profile covering 2425. So again, we'll be covering 2425 for both financial aid and the annual. So the enrollment profiles, all the data that we'll be talking about tonight is reported to the state and to IPeds, which is the federal reporting system. Our fall enrollment is based on the official federal count date of October 15th. So any school that's reporting, the federal government says October 15th is the date that you take the snapshot of what your fall enrollment is. You have an infographic sheet that's enclosed in the report, but it's also available as a loose leaf sheet that has kind of the highlights on some of the data that we're going to cover, which sometimes is nice for a quick reference. So for 202425, the headcount, 21,577. Headcount being the number of unduplicated students that we serve. So over the course of the fall '24, winter '25, and summer '25 semesters, this is how many students we had enrolled in at least one credit course over the course of the year. So if a student was enrolled in multiple semesters, they would only be counted once. So the headcount is the unduplicated number that we served in credit classes over last year. This increase is 2% over our prior academic year. We gained 409 students over the last year. We also had 9,304 new students enrolled last year in credit classes, and that was an increase of 36. So we're about even in terms of our new students. This gives you a breakdown of our enrollment over the last five years. The yellow bar at the bottom shows the number of new students that we have had enrolled, and the total bar is the number of other students with our total bar. And you can see since 2021, 2021 being impacted by COVID, of course, you see we've had a steady increase in the number of students we have enrolled in our credit classes. Talk about annual credit hours. Credit hours being when a student enrolls in a class for three credits, they generate three credit hours. So if I have 15 students enrolled in a three-credit class, they would generate 45 credit hours. So over the course of last year, we generated 238,258 credits. That was an increase, we almost had an increase of 5%. So we had an increase of over 10,000 credits from the prior academic year. You can see the listing. 36% of those credits were generated in the humanities, social, and behavioral sciences division, 31% in math and science and engineering, 16 in business and computer technologies, 10 in ATP division, and 7% in our health sciences area. Another way we report is through contact hours. Contact hours being when a class has 45 contact hours, every student that's enrolled would be generating 45 contact hours. So over the course of the last academic year, we generated over 4.3 million contact hours. Again, this would be data that would be reported to the state. That's a 5.4% increase over the '23-'24 year. You can see when we look at contact hours that the percentages differ a little bit. Math, science, and engineering, and humanities, social, and behavioral sciences both generated 32% of contact hours.
What's the difference between contact hours and credit hours?
So a credit hour is, each credit hour has a minimum of 15 contact hours. So contact hours is, so if you take a three-credit course, you pay three credits, three credits of tuition, but you're in that class for 45 hours. So over 15 weeks, you're in the class, three contact hours each week. So you would be generating 45 contact hours over the course of the semester. So think about credits as how I'm paying, how many credits I'm paying for, but my contact hours is how many hours am I actually in class? Now, minimally, a credit hour has to be 15 contact hours minimally, but if you're in a lab or a clinical or like in an auto class, those are going to have many more contact hours than that 1 to 15 ratio. But minimally, you have a 1 to 15 ratio. So your regular academic classes, like psychology, three credits, 45 contact hours. Where again, the classes with labs, the classes with other kind of hands-on areas, they have many more contact hours. So you can see where we had 238,000 credits, but we had over 4 million contact hours.
I understand. So when I take an art class, that's a three-credit art class, may meet six hours a week?
Correct.
So that's double because it's, because it's the contact hours?
That lab time, correct.
Gotcha.
So the contact hours, and so every time, every student that takes the class is generating their own set of contact hours. So...
So those are actually hours that our faculty are teaching, are in-class teaching, or some... Well, if there are 30 students in one of those hours, that staff has got, racking up 30 contact hours per...
Right. So the faculty is teaching 45 hours, but for every student in the class is generating another own set of 45 contact hours. So if there's 10 students, it would be 450 contact hours that were generated for that particular section. So you see the percentages, math, science, and engineering, humanities, social, and behavioral sciences, each with 32% of those contact hours, 15% in business, 12% in ATP, and 9% in our health sciences area. If we look at the gender of our students, you can see that for 2425, 52% of our students who reported gender were males. You'll see when we later talk about the fall semester, that looks different. But when we talk about the whole academic year, we have a higher percentage of males than females. Again, this is primarily due to our trade partners where, that are predominantly male. So when we look at annual headcount, that male percentage goes up annually. That will not be the case when we look at our fall numbers. So for our minority composition, our minority composition for 202425 was 41%. If we look at the minority composition for the county, in the 2020 census, it was 30.6%. So again, for the students that we enroll, we enroll a higher proportion of all the ethnic categories except for Asian, in terms of what, residents of the county versus the students that we have enrolled. You see, that's a slight increase from the prior year of where it was 40%. You can see the breakdown. 10% of our students over the year were Asian, 14% African-American, 9% Hispanic, 6% were two or more, Native American .3, and we had about 10% of our students over the course of the year not specifying their ethnic category.
I got a question. Could you go back to that slide, please? It's always a concern of mine of the African-American. Now, are these just males or females, or is both of the 14%?
14% is both, the whole population.
Is there a breakdown for individual? Not individual, but males and females, African-American?
There isn't. In the, in the book, there is, yes.
Okay. Yeah, I saw it. Okay.
This just graphically shows those same numbers for the last, for the five years as well. You can see that we've had, or starting to have, a little bit more of two or more category and also individuals who are not reporting their ethnicity. Again, that's not a required field, but that field is, we do report that as not reported. If we look at, these are the new students who came in last year, so during 2425, the new students that were admitted. We look at the students, basically the academic level that they're coming in at. So you can see that 8% of the students that we admitted, new students, were college graduates. These are students who have already completed a degree and are coming to take additional classes with us. Of 50, an additional 50% of the students are transferring from a two- or four-year institution and continuing to take classes with us. And so those indicate, that is in the green bar, is the students who have some prior college, that could be from a two-year or a four-year school. The blue bar at the bottom is the college graduate, you can, graduates. You can see that has declined a little bit over the last five years, but we continue to have college graduates enrolling. And the, the yellow bar on the top is our current high school students. And you can see over the course of the last five years, we are having an increase in the number of students who are newly coming in and being admitted, who are current high school students. The gray bar would be students who are coming to us, being admitted as high school, that the highest level of education is as a high school graduate.
The yellow bar, the yellow piece is dual-enrolled?
Yes.
Probably completely, or mostly? It's, those are dual-enrollers?
The yellow, the yellow is students who are dueling, enrolling from high school.
Which is expanding tremendously?
It's expanding, yes.
Well, that's like a 20% growth?
Yes, it has expanded quite a bit. We'll talk more about that also. If we look at the age group, this gives you each of these age bars. So the green bar, and you can see again, over the last five years, the green bar that's at the left of the bars are students who are 17 and younger. And you can see that that population is growing. Again, as we're enrolling more dual-enrolled students, we have students that are 17 and younger. The next bar is 18 to 20. And you can see, when we came out of COVID, we lost some of our 18 to 19-year-olds. Those students were, you know, I am tired of school. So, but you can see that we are continuing, we are getting those students back. They kind of took a break. They, had less of them enrolling, but we are now bringing more of those students in. We think a lot of that is attributable to the community college, the state's doing things for like community college guarantee to help those students and encourage those students to enroll. You also see that, we also are experiencing more of our adult students as the state has the Reconnect Scholarship, which will be talked about a little bit later. So for students who are originally 25 or older, or the 21 to 24, and you can see that we had some little upticks in those groups as well. Sorry, I want to go back. So our average age for 2425 was 26.8, and our median age, so 50% of our students were 22 or younger, and 50% above 22. So our non-credit enrollments, our non-credit enrollments for the last year was 7,910. You can see that four areas accounted for about half of those non-credit enrollments: construction technology, our motorcycle safety program, which is very popular, our skill building, which is our GED preparation program, and our hobbies classes. This graphically shows what those, those numbers look like for our non-credit area. When we talk about our enrollments, and so each class, each time a student enrolls in a class, it generates an enrollment. So for the 202425 academic year, we generated 73,908 enrollments of credit classes. This gives us a sense of how, what percentage, so 49% of the enrollments last year were face-to-face. So now we're going to talk about, you know, are these face-to-face, and we'll talk about the other ones. But this gives you a sense of, for 2425, 30, a little over 36,000 of those 73,000 enrollments were face-to-face. So each enrollment counts as one. So if a student took five classes, and three of them are face-to-face, that count, they would count three times here. You can see for 2021, our, we had very few face-to-face enrollments due to COVID, but you can see each year, we're bringing and having more students taking face-to-face classes. The color bars indicate the division that those classes are being taken in. So of course, the top bar, as you would expect, is advanced transportation. So those classes are primarily all in-person, face-to-face classes. And you can see that, you know, the other divisions have varying numbers of the face-to-face classes. Yes?
If you were to subtract out COVID, so if you were to take these numbers and go back one year, so you're looking at 2019, 20, or 2018, 19, how do the face-to-face enrollments now compare to that period prior to COVID?
So we are not quite back up to our pre-COVID numbers, but we're getting close.
Okay. Thank you.
These show our DLs. So these would be our online enrollments. So again, of that, of that 73,908 enrollments for the entire academic year, 31,742 were distance learning enrollments. Again, you can see what those enrollments look like over the last five years. Business is, has the highest online enrollments. They have their entire business transfer program. I mean, accounting are online, but you can see as a division, they offer the most proportion of online enrollments. The other category of enrollments that you, that you see here are virtual enrollments. Virtual enrollments are online, but they have a set day and time. So our online classes that we talked about earlier, our DL, is asynchronous. The student has to do homework assignments every week, but they do not have a specific day and time that they have to log in for the class. Virtual is something that started during COVID, and basically, it was a way for us to offer online classes, but with a set day and time. So my class meets Monday and Wednesday at 6:00. I'm logging to Zoom, and I'm in class in Zoom with all my, I see my instructor, and I see my classmates. We've continued, you can see we've declined as we've brought more face-to-face classes back to campus. Our virtual enrollments have declined. However, we still offer virtual enrollments. Sometimes that's a way for students who maybe don't want to have a totally asynchronous, they like having a structure of, I know I have my class every week on Mondays and Wednesdays. So it allows them to start thinking about how online's going to be, but have a more structured format. And so again, for our 73,000 enrollments that we had last year, a little over 5,200 of those enrollments were provided virtually. And you can see again, the divisions and how those are broken apart. And our last category of enrollments are blended. Blended means I'm having a combination of online and in-person. So our blended classes primarily use our online, so the classes that have gone through and developed an online curriculum, and it's been approved, we have a very rigorous process for our online classes before they're released. So those blended classes would use that online curriculum, however, they have an in-person component as well. So they have a blended format. A lot of times, they might be lab classes, so they might be doing the theory and lectures online, but then they're coming to campus for the lab portion. And so 1% of our enrollments last year were provided in a blended format. Yes?
So some, I think we're, somebody said that some of our higher-level math classes, even if they're online, they have to go for an in-person test at the testing center? Would that become blended?
No. It is not.
So just by doing an in-person test, that doesn't make it blended?
Correct. Now, what we do is make sure that at the time of registration, we mark, so those classes, those, if you have a fully online class, but you're going to have to take an in-person test, in-person proctored, we note the schedule, the section, that this, this section requires in-person testing. And so the student knows ahead of time, but it's still considered online because all of your instruction is going to be provided online. So we still code those as online, but the student will know that before they register, this class is, I'm going to have to go to a testing center and do my testing in-person.
Thank you.
You're welcome. So this shows the blended. And so this just shows kind of a distribution of, over the last three years of our D, oh, sorry. When we talk about, so those things, the numbers we just talked about were the actual enrollments. So if I took five classes online over the course of the year, I would have generated five online enrollments. Maybe I took three in-person classes, I generated three in-person, and maybe I took two blended classes. When we want to count students in one of the categories, the categories that they can be in is DL only, so I'm only taking online classes. So you can see for 2425, 44% of our classes took, 40, excuse me, 44% of our students took online classes only. 27% took a combination. They took a face-to-face class and an online class over the course, and again, this is over the course of the entire year. And 29% of our students took face-to-face classes only. Sometimes that combination, and we find generally that the students that are in that combination of face-to-face and DL generally take the highest proportion of credits. So they have a little bit average credit high, because maybe I'm taking three in-person classes, I can't really fit another fourth class in my in-person schedule, but I'll pick up an online class so that I have more credits, but I have not as much time on, on campus. And so, but again, we'll see as we move forward that these percentages, as we move into fall, are looking different. Also, think about for spring/summer, our spring/summer semester, many of our students are taking online classes. We have a lot of guest students, and so we have higher proportions of online classes in the summer than in fall and winter. And again, because many guest students are wanting, maybe they're working a job, they want to take that class online.
Okay. See how I can, I'm looking at online only. What about international students?
That cannot be online only. Well, okay.
They can't do online?
If they're, if it's an international student who has come to us as an F1 student, that's the visa, I'm, I'm, F1 is the visa type that I need, that I have to apply and say, I want to come and be a student in the United States. I'm coming in on F1 visa. Those students can only take one online class. So that's a, that's a rule. If they're coming in as a student, as an international student and being enrolled with us, the federal government limits them to only one online class. However, we could have an international student who is still in their country and are taking classes with us. So they could be taking some online classes. So they could be living in Mexico, or be living in Spain, and take our online classes. They would not have a limitation. But if they've come into the country because they want to be a student, and they've met those requirements to be admitted in the country on a student visa, we have to monitor, and they can only be enrolled in one online class per semester.
Okay. I read today that international students are declining, or have been declining, because of this new, whatever that is that's going on with the government. And how is, I'm just wondering, how is that affecting us as a community college with students who want to come here but can't? So how is that working with the students who already have been admitted to this institution? Do you know? I'm asking...
So if we have our international students already here, they've been able to maintain their enrollment. Sometimes we're encouraging them not to go home for this, if they're planning to go home for the summer, we're advising them that going home over the summer might not be a good idea because they might have trouble coming back in. We are finding that some students who are going through the admission process are sometimes having difficulty getting the actual visa to come into the country. So I think that's across the United States, that as schools are admitting students, they're sometimes not being able to get their visa to come into the country.
Okay. So is there anything that we can do, but there's nothing that we can do as a institution?
That's correct.
Okay. Okay. I kind of knew that. Thank you.
What is our international enrollment, and how does it compare to prior years?
Kind of a little bit, that's all, that's also in our, it's also in our book?
I looked through it, and I didn't see any, any numbers that enroll.
It would be under the residency? So, I'm, sorry.
Page 38 of the fall student profile. If you look down on the chart, it's...
So for fall, this fall, we have 232 students who, international students who are enrolled with us, and that has declined a little bit. We've been able to maintain most of it, but generally, we're about 250, 230, somewhere in there as our international students.
Historically, what has been our high number of international students?
I would say probably close to 300.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome. So the residency, just, the residency in, in the annual profile, rather than reporting the residency as a student, which we did in the fall semester, but because residency can change, we have students who, maybe they come as an out-of-district student, but they move into the county, and they're an out-of-district student for fall, they become an in-district student for summer or winter term. We report all of the credit hours and contact hours by residency status, because as the student was enrolled, the credit hours and contact hours that they generated, we would report that on an annual basis. And so that's where it's reported a little bit differently in our, in the profiles.
So I understand that F1 visas are harder to get. Does that mean our new students on F1, are we seeing new students with F1 visas?
Yes, we are.
So we still are seeing new students?
Yes, we are.
But of this 232, are most of them returning students, I'm assuming?
Most of those are returning, yes. So we still have students applying with us, going through the admission process. Sometimes they're not able to get here.
Gotcha.
So they go through and meet all the requirements, but they still have to go through the embassy to actually get the F1 visa to come into the country, and that's where they're sometimes having difficulty.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
This is really not, I should, I'll go ahead and say, do we know if any ICE people been here? Because we have international students.
We have, we have had, we had an incident where, I won't call it incident, we had an interaction, thank you, my colleagues providing me the correct word. We had an interaction where a student who was not an international student, is a US citizen, who graduated from, 19-year-old, who graduated from Pioneer High School. However, he had some decals on his car that indicated he had a Mexican heritage. Three ICE cars followed him from off-campus to on-campus and basically stopped him. And he indicated that, told them he was a citizen, and the interaction was about 35 seconds, because we had it on film, and they left. So that is the, what we've had on campus so far at this point. So also in the annual profile, we talk about the number of awards that we gave out over the last year. So... So our total awards were 3,828. That's over 2,300 certificates, and that certificate number is up 261, just 12% increase over the last academic year. We had 1,474 associate degrees, and that was up 14 from the prior academic year. So keep in mind that we award our degrees four times, basically at the end of fall semester, which would be December, at the end of winter, which would be in late April or early May, then at the end of our kind of first six, seven and a half weeks of summer, and then again in August. So over those four times, those four awarding points, is when the degrees would be awarded. And when we have our commencement, all of these individuals, no matter what time, at what point they're graduating, would be invited to commencement, which we do once a year. These, on our annual college awards, are some areas that had some big increases over the last academic year. So welding and fabrication principles, which is a certificate program, was up 44%. Our accounting for business had 106% increase. Our digital media arts, we had our programming and Java certificate, as well as our programming and Java associate degree also had large number increases. Our SENA program, which is our nursing assistant, increased 76% over the last academic year. Our math and science associate degrees also had a large increase. Many of these students, we talked about from, are through our, through WTMC, but we also have a lot of students graduating in that area. And then our MTA, which is our Michigan Transfer Agreement Certificate, that's 30 credits of Gen Ed. We had over nearly 1,300 individuals who earned this, the MTA certificate. That was 54% of all of our certificates. Again, this student infographic sheet that you have, for the profiles, the first two columns, both the front and the back, give facts about the annual, so the 24, 25, the annual data, and then the right column on both sides provides data on fall 2025. I'm now going to hand this over to my colleague to talk about financial aid.
Good evening. So tonight I will be discussing our 2024-25 financial aid profile, and this information is only related to the funds that the financial aid office administers. So there's going to be additional funds, but this is about the financial aid that the student financial aid area actually administers. So for the 24-25 school year, the college financial aid department administered $41,294,217,000. This represents a 16.5% increase over the 23-24 school year. That difference is over $5 million, $5.8 million additional funds we received to support students through our financial aid department. When we look at how many students actually received financial aid, you'll see back in 2020, 21, about 6,000, a little over 6,000 students received financial aid. Five years later, 6,800 students are receiving financial aid, represented about a 13.5% increase since 2021. When we look at the total number of students who are not receiving financial aid, we see a small decrease from last year of 12,292 students to 11,895. Yes, sir.
Does this include student loans?
It doesn't.
So the student loans are in here?
Yes.
And then is most of the grant money administered by our office, Pell Grants?
Yes, Pell Grants. A few more slides.
And then there's a little bit that's actually our money in our budget?
Correct.
That we put in?
Yes.
Yes. Thank you.
So when we look at the types of financial aid that we receive here at the college, you'll see that grants represent the majority, $19,268,925. Scholarships, $9,214,07. Loans, and these loans are student loans, direct student loans to students, subsidized and unsubsidized loans, along with plus loans for parents as well. And finally, we have a small amount, $225,677 that went to students who were part of our work-study program, for again, a total of $41 million. And when we look at the breakdown of the, of the actual graph, you'll notice that the majority, over 69% of the students who, 69% of the aid provided to students is in a form of a grant scholarship for work-study. And how students are using their funds, so approximately $16.7 million of the 41 million was used to pay tuition over this past school year, with additional, a little bit less than a million dollars used to purchase books and supplies. And as comparison, last year, $12.3 million were used in financial aid to pay tuition. So when we look at the sources of the financial aid coming in, federal dollars last year was The state was $4.7 million, and WCC provided $910,817 to students. And external, external represents students, scholarships that we get from our foundation and from other external partners, was about $2.1 million. Again, $41 million provided to students last year. So as we looked at the federal breakdown, again, Pell Grants represents the largest, 18.6, almost $7 million provided for students in Pell Grants. Direct loans was, was next, over $12.7 million. Reconnect expansion, so get a little background on reconnect expansion. Reconnect expansion 21-24 is federal dollars. You'll hear me later on talk about reconnect that is state-funded, but in this case, it was funding that we, that we received from the federal government. And then a smaller portion, a little under $800,000, which is the supplemental educational opportunity grant, work-study, foster, and some smaller funding that we get from the state of Michigan. And you can see that 56% of the funding that the federal government gave to us was in the form of grants, and about 38% in the form of loans.
How much, I should remember this, when we were at our MCCA, or what was it? Yeah. That the, the feds increased the Pell Grant. Have we gotten that yet, or that's coming in the first of the year?
We did, we received this, it's a small $85 difference from last year.
Okay. I thought, sounded like we get more. I'm sorry.
And I do, I do.
$85.
And I do want to, want to say that when you, when we look at the year-over-year comparison for Pell, the increase in Pell was over $4.4 million that we received from the federal government since la, over last year. And I'll talk a little bit more in the next slide about why that is.
Yeah.
So all of our state funding, as far as scholarships to students, requires the students to fill out the FAFSA. So again, if you don't fill out the FAFSA, in many cases, you won't receive state funding. So that has generated the increase in the Pell dollars for more students. So when we look at what the state has provided for us, tuition incentive program, a little bit over $1.4 million. This is the reconnect, the regular reconnect, 24, 25-year-old adult students, $1.43 million. And then, two years ago, this was called the Michigan Achievement Scholarship. It's still called it at the four-year, but the two-year, they've changed it to the Community College Guarantee, providing a little under $1.7 million. And then we get small amounts for different scholarships that comes up to $209,568, for $4.7 million. And when we look, it's evenly distributed between reconnect, tuition incentive program, and the Community College Guarantee. So it's about a third, a little bit, little less than a third for each one. Do want to say that prior to COVID, the state provided funding, but since COVID, through the Futures for Frontliners, Michigan Reconnect, and the Community College Guarantee, we've seen an increase from the state of about $2.7 million in the last five years, going directly for student support scholarships for students here at our college.
Okay. We're going, yeah, FAFSA. I spoke with someone a few days ago who works here and tried to fill out his FAFSA, and there was a glitch. So he has not been able to take any classes because of the FAFSA. Is there still an issue with the FAFSA filling out, students filling it out?
No, but we would definitely would like to hear from the student to help the student with the FAFSA.
All right. I can give you the, his name. Okay. Thank you.
And then we, and when we look at what WCC has provided for students, so last fiscal year, 507 students received over $900,000 from the, from Washington Community College. Again, we are seeing more students receiving state funding, so we expect to continue to provide large amounts of money for our students through scholarships, but also there's additional funding coming to state as well. And these funds are not administered directly from the financial aid department, but they're here because they also support students. So our Emeritus Scholarship last year was $451,672, and we break that up for credit courses, represents 39%, $177,000, and for non-credit classes, 270, a little under $275,000 for non-credit courses. For those individuals who either work in, in our district or own property in our district, we provided additional support to offset to their tuition of $137,299. And then for partner high schools, and our partner high schools are those high schools' students who, because of school of choice, they live outside of the district, but they are attending a high school in Washington County. We offset that tuition cost for them, a little, a little under $21,000 for the, for those students. Yes, sorry.
These bottom two things, are those actual dollars, or is that just a paper, a paper subsidy, basically?
It's, it's.
That we're writing off part of their tuition because we're saying they work or live in the, or own property? They don't live here, but they work or own property?
We're, we're providing a scholarship that covers the difference in between in district and out-of-district.
So is that money coming out of our scholarship fund? Into our, I'm looking, it's transferring in different line items in our budget, from the money that we allocate in our budget to scholarships, that's being moved over to tuition?
Yes.
And is that, that's not true of the Emeritus Scholarship?
That's an element of the state. So if you say you're going to give, if you say here you're going to define how tuition is assessed?
Right.
Based on residency? And if you're going to give a tuition break?
Right.
Because they have property in district or they work in district, you can't just give them that break, you have to account for that with a scholarship.
So, okay, but when I'm looking at, when we approve the budget, the line item that says how much money we're spending on scholarships, this is how some of that money's going?
Correct.
Correct.
Is that, does the Emeritus Scholarship also get that transfer as well? So we're transferring?
Yes.
For that Emeritus? So if I sign, last time I signed up for a class, I paid the tuition, which I was happy to do, I was over 65, and then they gave me my tuition back because of the Emeritus Scholarship. I don't want to be taking money, money from other students.
Why not?
You can give it to the foundation and they'll give it to students.
Okay, that's what I'll do. Okay. That's what I'll do.
You're sure you, if they're sure they actually want the class for sure, they sign up and pay by the deadline?
Right.
But we run reports because if, if they say, no, I only want to take the class if I'm going to use the scholarship, because we want our credit, our students who need the class to graduate or whatever?
Right.
Have first choice of the class. So just three days before the semester starts, an Emeritus student can come in and if there's spots open in the class, they can sign up for the class and they will not have to pay the scholarship at our monthly hit. So for those individuals who say, I really want this class, but if I'm eligible for the scholarship, so there's a report that we run, and so three days before the class is took, three days before the semester started, there was an opening in the class, so that's why you got your money back. If they're, if the class had been full, you would not have gotten your money back.
But I, fine. Next time that happens, I'm going to donate it to the foundation.
Okay. I'm just telling how it works.
Thank you very much. I understand. Now I'm understanding.
And that segues into our foundation. So WCC Foundation Scholarships. So last year, 969 students received $1.3 million from our foundation through scholarships. Slight decrease over 23-24, and again, it's related to a lot of additional funding coming in from the state, so students who in the past would have went to the foundation for additional scholarship funding, state's covering some of that funding, so that small decrease is not because they're not trying to get the money out, but students have other ways of paying for school. But over the last four years, the foundation has awarded an average of $1.36 million to students, again, to cover their tuition, books, and other expenses, other educational expenses as well. And then when we look at our students and our, from our foundation, assisting students with the, it's now called the Student Impact Fund, but in this report in the annual profile, it's the Student Emergency Fund. The emergency fund gave out $73,819 to about 175 students last year. Increase of about 86 students received additional funding. And then the top graph, a great, the gold graph, represents those, how much we spent to support student, parents, and childcare grants. So last year, we gave out $179,015. And again, this is another piece where there was a smaller, a small decrease, but again, we have additional funding coming from the state to supporting students. So we're using the funds to ensure the students have all they need. And then when we look at how financial aid is supporting students to get to the completion. For 24-25, we had 3,828 certificates and degrees awarded with the 200, sorry, 2,791 unique graduates. Of that number, 1,284 students received Pell, 647 students received foundation scholarships, and this is over the time that they were here. Michigan Reconnect, 340, or 345 students. Tuition Incentive 223, Futures for Frontliners 101. You can see our President, Presidential Scholarship, 64, students who receive emergency aid. And when you look at that, 73% of our students who graduated received some support, some support financially from either college, the state, our federal government, including, and also our foundation. So in comparison, last year, that number was 60% of our students received, so. And this, just one quick update. So Michigan Reconnect temporarily extended the eligibility for students from '25 to '21. That was at the end, at the end of December 31st of 2024. And you can see, first year of the Michigan Reconnect extension, we had 267 students take advantage of it, but in '24-25, we had 644 students take advantage of it. And these are students who are between the age of 21 and 24 years of age. And then the Community College Guarantee, one of the highlights that we found this year was, prior to this year, Michigan Community College Guarantee required a student to be full-time. If they were not full-time at first, within 18 months of graduation, they would lose access to the scholarship. They made a slight change that said, if a student is enrolled part-time in those 18 months, they lose their first-year eligibility, but the second year, if they go full-time, they will receive the Community College Guarantee scholarship. So in the past, they would have lost it by not being a full-time student. They're at least allowing the students, they, they will lose one year of eligibility, but they were, they have two additional years of eligibility remain, so that's a positive. And you can see here, we went from 244 the first year that the program started to 841 students last year.
A lot of that had to do with MCCA lobbying to get, you know, to increase it, their eligibility for the students. It was difficult, but they had to keep going up, up to the hill and talk to them increasingly.
I read that the age range for reconnect is going to be adjusted going forward? It's moved to 21?
So it's still 25 right now. It, it was part of last year's budget, didn't make it out of the budget, but they are placing it back in for the next year's budget. But they are placing it back in for the next year's budget to bring '24 to '24 into Reconnect permanently. But that didn't pass last year, and they're hoping to get it passed this year as well.
Thank you.
So it's just a slight change?
And then again, in the infographic, the left column refers to the '24, '25 financial aid information, and the right column covers the fall 2025 facts as well. And then I want to say finally, thanks to Andrew Mangia and all the financial aid staff for the work that they do throughout, throughout the year. Again, $41 million goes through office of about eight people that work in the office, and they handle that, and definitely appreciate all the work that they do. Again, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Haven't gone to jail yet, so we're good.
Okay. So all the stuff we've been talking about
I'm sorry, I do have a question. Have you received any direction from the federal government about potential changes to the Pell Grant or the federal student financial aid programs that?
We haven't. That was, last year, there was some discussion about that. But we haven't heard anything this year. There are some changes coming July 1st to student loans, but it's really about repayment. But no, no, no changes have happened effective right now, so.
Given our national situation, are we expecting more students needing this financial aid?
Yes. The, the numbers of students who are coming back to school for retraining, because all of the state dollars requires, requires them to use the FAFSA, they will be eligible for whatever financial aid through federal government first and then the state second. So I, I do believe we will continue to see an increase in the, the number and the amount of funding that we're getting to support students.
Okay. So all the data that's been presented to date so far in the meeting has been annual data for '24, '25. So now we're gonna shift, and we're gonna talk about fall 2025. So the official comp data, as we mentioned earlier, was October 15th. On October 15th, we had 11,641 students enrolled in credit classes for the fall semester. That was up 3.7% over fall '24, so about 421 students. And those students were enrolled in 94,582 credits. That's the kind of data that makes Terry happy. So that was an increase of 4,118 credits or 4.5% over fall '24. So if you look at the students who are enrolled full-time, so full-time is students who are enrolled in 12 or more credits. For the first time in a long time, we had an increase in the, in the percentage. So our full-time students are now up to 28%. It has been running 25, 26%. Again, I think the changes in the Community College Guarantee that requires students to be enrolled full-time had an impact on this. Our average credit load, so if we look at all of our students, all of our degree-seeking students, their credits, they take an average of 8.9 credits over the term. For students who are non-degree, so they've indicated they're not planning to get a degree with us, their average credit load is 6.2. If we look at intent, we ask the student when they come in, what they're planning to do. Are they planning to get an associate degree, associate degree transfer? Are they planning to get a certificate, a certificate and transfer? Just planning, I'm coming in, taking just some transfer credits, not planning to get a degree with you? Or other? So you can see for our fall 2025, our degree-seeking students were 71%. And 56% of our students indicate that they plan to transfer. I will tell you that this number for degree-seeking is underestimated because all of our dual-enrolled students, including our early middle college students, are in the other category. The federal government and the state do not allow colleges and universities to count dual-enrolled students as degree-seeking. Even if they're an early middle college student who are required to, doesn't make any sense. But even those students who are required to earn a degree or certificate as part of their graduation requirements, we cannot report them as degree-seeking students. They're, well, we report them everywhere as a student, but they're not reported as a degree-seeking student. They will be reported as they graduate because they're, they're in those graduation numbers that we talked about earlier.
But you don't keep those numbers on the side?
What do you mean by keep the numbers on the side?
So you say that the dual-enrolled students cannot be counted as degree-seeking or transfer-seeking? They have to be in that other category. But in terms of numbers that the college keeps, that not for the purpose of reporting, but just for the purpose of accounting for those students?
Yes.
You keep them on the side?
Yes, and we, on the, on the side, yes. So we keep them, yes, we keep them on the side. So we also are keeping track of the program that they're pursuing. So again, we can't have a program in Banner, that reporting system, but we keep it in Target X. So that as, you know, if they're pursuing automotive or mechatronics, we have that information. And so as advisors are supporting those students with plans, they know what, what program the student's pursuing. I mean, if we make changes in the program, they're also getting all the communications on those programs. So if we have a visitor that's coming, a school is coming in to talk, and want to talk to welding students, they would get the invite on the information because we have that program connected to them in Target X, but not in Banner.
So on this bar graph, the purple other, is that entirely dual-enrolled? Or are there?
No, no, there's still, no, there's a few.
But that's mostly the dual enrollment?
There's 1371 other.
Right.
16. Yeah, and about a little bit, just a, there was like 80 students that aren't dual-enrolled.
So almost all of that purple part of the graph, except for 80 students?
Yes.
Is dual enrollment?
Yes.
So in our case, when we're looking at this, we could assume that most of that purple is degree-seeking?
No.
Except for 80 people?
No, because some of our dual-enrolled students are non-degree-seeking with us. And we'll talk a little bit later, yes, because some of those dual-enrolled students are just coming to take a class or two. They're gonna go to get a degree from U of M or Wisconsin or somewhere else. The early middle college students will be getting a degree with us. So some of those early middle college students are just, they really have a transfer intent. They're taking classes, getting a head start, that they're not necessarily planning to get a degree with us.
Okay.
You're welcome. So for fall 2025, our average age is 25.2. You can see the age categories over the last five years. As expected, because of the increase in dual enrollment, you can see that lime green bar has increased over the last five falls. Our, we have 65% of our students below the age of 25. So you can see again, as we've, again, I think attributable to the, the Community College Guarantee, that green bar, so that 18 and 19-year-olds, we're also seeing an increase in those, that age bracket as well as those, more of those students are enrolling with us. The most common age on our campus this semester is 19. We had over 1,300 students that were aged 19. And the next category was 18 at 1207. Right, so you would, so you would, you would be either in the, the blue bar or that red bar? Not sure what your age is, sorry? So. Yep, so each of those bars are, there's more detail, like what, what areas those are in, but this is the overall, the group, the overall grouping. No, but it's, it's in your, it's in your, in your. Okay, sorry. So.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. These numbers, especially as they regard younger students and traditional college-age students, seem to contradict the hand-wringing about the enrollment cliff. We see these younger students, the enrollment increasing, whereas we're being told there are fewer of those students to enroll.
Well, I don't know that we've actually got to the cliff yet.
Okay.
And certainly, we know when we came out of COVID, we lost, there was traditional that 18, those recent high school grads, that was a group that we lost a lot. And you can see now they're returning to us. But, you know, that was, and we're glad to see them coming back. And we're, again, we're continuing to increase our partnerships with our high schools and the early middle college that we'll talk about in a minute. So that is a group that we're seeing continue to increase those enrollments as well. But I don't want you to think that there's not, there's, there's a cliff. Just hasn't quite hit us yet. Because my, our team is fantastic. We're gonna beat the cliff. Dave, did you have a question?
Well, something totally, maybe this is a separate question, it's not here, but I wanted to ask you a thing about enrollment comparison by college and department? Should I ask that later?
No, you can, so?
I'm, I'm not sure if we're doing, going into the deeper dive in this book yet.
Tell me your question.
Okay. I'm, I'm looking at things like this, and one area that I think is important, and I'm on page 49.
And are you in, are you in the annual or the fall?
Well, page 49.
Turn to the front cover. Are you in the annual or the fall?
Are you, these are people?
Oh, fall. I guess I need to look at annual.
Well, there's, there's, there's enrollment data, there's enrollment data, contact hour data in both books. One's annual and one is fall.
Okay. I, I mean, what I was looking at, I thought this was all financial aid, but I guess it's student profile, so. I'm looking at this digital media arts department, and I see, what?
What page?
49. In the, in the, fall, fall.
Okay, got it? Fall, page 49, got it?
And I, I think it misrepresents the, the growth because we've discontinued the web design and development. So 100% change, that huge drop over five years of minus 140, when in fact, there's been in that department, except for that discontinued program, there's been growth.
Correct.
So I, I'm worried that we're almost presenting a false image of the going-forward, digital media arts programs are growing. But if you just look at the bottom line there, it looks like, no, that's not true. And I don't want that, I don't want that, I don't, it's a program that I see a lot of future in, in terms of jobs, job opportunities.
Correct. And we would not look at just, we, the dean's and, and VP Tucker, EBP Tucker will take that into consideration. They won't get rid of anything based on that.
Okay. Okay, thank you very much.
You're welcome. So if you look at gender and minority composition for the fall semester, remember for the annual, we had 54% of our students were male. Again, when we look at just our fall enrollment, 54% of our students are female. Our minority composition is 40.5%. That compares to 39.7 in fall of '24. Again, you can see the breakdown in ethnic categories. And again, we have a higher percentage of each ethnic category enrolled compared to the county percentages, except for Asian.
It's still back on the African-American, have they, the males? Because there was a big concern about the males not completing their, their studies. And so I'm just looking at, I, I don't know how that, if that's still the case, that African-American males, are they starting and then dropping out? Or are they starting and staying?
We are doing a better job of retaining and graduating those students. Still, still a challenge. But we are doing a better job of that. And we come to you next year with the, the, the data, you'll, you'll be able to see that there's a growth in the graduation rates of the African-American students.
And also the females too, because I did see a dip. Last time we discussed this, there was a nice dip in the females, which surprised me on that. So that's the same concept that you're looking at, increasing that?
Yes, so we'd be excited to share, show you that information as well.
Okay, great, thank you. This graphically shows you the data of, by ethnic category for the fall semester over the last five fall semesters. So for fall 2025, our dual-enrolled high school students increased from 1489 to 1665. So that's an increase of about 12% from last, from fall '24 to fall '25. Our top five feeder high schools for new students, and this would include dual-enrolled students as well as our recent high school grads, Ann Arbor, Huron, Dexter, Belleville, Celine, and Ann Arbor Pioneer. If we look at our dual enrollment partners, you can see WTMC is, has 419 students enrolled. So remember, they have about 800 students, but only 419 of those are actually enrolled in credit classes for the fall semester. That's followed by Dexter, which is one of our middle college partners. Howell, Pinkney, Heartland would all be partners. They're part of our LISA, our Livingston County Early Middle College Partnership. Belleville is a new early middle college. They are, or actually, they're authorized through Wayne County Community College. They were taking classes at the Wayne County Community College Western Campus, the one on Haggerty. They were not happy with them. And so they moved their entire early middle college program to us this fall. So those 60 students from Belleville are all early middle college students, and they're very happy with us. You can see the other students. Huron, Ipsland Community Schools, we also have early middle college program with them. You can see that WTMC, they only are representing 25% of our dual-enrolled students that are on campus this fall semester. Last fall, that was 27%. Up in the upper corner, you can see that 618 of those students are middle college students. So the majority are still regular dual enrollment, but we are seeing increases, 37% of those students are early middle college. 37% of those students are taking face-to-face classes only. 48% are taking DL only. And again, we have students from 70 school districts. So if you think around Washington County, we have nine school districts, but we have over 70 school districts that students take classes from. So we have students from across the state of Michigan that are accessing our classes due to the quality of those classes. And then we have 15% of those dual-enrolled students that are taking both a combination of online and face-to-face.
Okay. What happened to Ann Arbor Pioneer? They're not in here?
These are just the top 10 list.
Right.
So they're, so the, Ann Arbor Pioneer has less than 41 students that are dual-enrolled this semester. These are just the dual-enrolled, these are just the top 10 dual-enrolled.
Okay, but I saw Ann Arbor Pioneer be, on the other one, that you were?
Those were all of our new students coming in, all new.
All new, right.
High school grads and dual. These are just dual.
These are just dual.
Pioneer had the more new students that were coming in that were graduates.
Got you.
Okay.
There's only nine high schools?
Sorry, top nine.
Okay.
One mistake. Dave, come on, they're not supposed to count. Okay.
No numbers. What do you think?
So if we look at our enrollment, so again, we talked about our enrollment. So we have over 28,000 enrollments. So again, each time a student takes a class, they generate an enrollment. So the 28,000, over 28,000 enrollments that we have for the fall semester, 47, again, we're seeing more students coming back and taking our face-to-face classes. So 47% of So forty-seven percent of the enrollments for fall semester, over thirteen thousand, are face-to-face. And you can see this broken down by the division or area that the class is being offered Our distance learning, our DL enrollments, is forty-two percent of those enrollments. Again, you can see that business is, has the highest number of enrollments, like we saw annually, the same thing happens for the fall. And then again, our virtual, so the classes that are online but offered in a synchronous way is seven percent of the enrollments for fall, a little less than two thousand of the enrollments for the fall semester. And blended is about four percent. So again, these are classes that have an online component as well as a in-person component on the campus. So when we talk about students and we want to, again, put them in one of the categories, so if we want to talk about thirty-nine percent of the students enrolled for fall are taking face-to-face classes only, so a little over forty-five hundred students, you can see their composition, they're fifty percent female, their forty-three percent are age twenty and below, sixty-one percent are in district. And if you take a combination of classes, students are taking a combination of online and virtual with face-to-face, that's twenty-five percent of our enrollments for this semester. Again, that's fifty-four percent female. And if students who are taking online only, and that could be online and virtual, so either way, it's just online, they're not taking an on-campus component, that's thirty-six percent of the students. So again, students are in one of these buckets based on how they're taking their classes. And that group is fifty-seven percent female. I'd like to thank all the faculty and staff for supporting all the enrollment initiatives that we do around the year to keep our enrollments up. Special thanks to Pete Leskovich and the enrollment team, Kathy Curry and our data team, Pat Bracco and Cammie Davis, the Illusian team who helped put, get these books, these beautiful books put together, Shane Redman and the IR team for a lot of the stats that we have, and Haley North and Rich Resler for the infographics and the actual production of the books.
And I'd like to thank Linda Blakey and Clarence Jennings for your leadership.
Thanks.
I have a question. Thank you.
Okay, so I have a question in reference to, I think it was the Belleville High School, Wayne County Community College, they were dissatisfied, yada, yada, yada. So with them, Dexter, Pinkney, and I'm just speaking of them specifically, if there's some, another school in that category dual enrollment, when they come to us, are we, are we having them to pay out-of-district tuition?
So Belleville would pay out-of-district, Pinkney would pay out-of-district, Heartland would pay out-of-district, Dexter pays in district. So if the school is in Washtenaw County, they pay in district. If they, if the school is, or if the student, it's based on the student, where the student lives.
Okay.
So like WTMC has in district and out-of-district, so depending on where the student lives, they would be assessed in district or out-district tuition.
Okay. All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
So if they're in high school?
Yes.
The state allocates a per pupil funding?
Correct.
So if they're enrolled in a college class, are they paying, if they're out-of-district, they have to pay more than that funding, that per pupil funding that they're getting from the, from the state?
So remember that per pupil funding is about ninety-three, ninety-four hundred dollars per year.
Right.
Our tuition does not come anywhere close to that. So even if it's out-of-district, it does not...
I got you. That's why it's actually, even our out-of-district tuition for those people that we're paying Wayne County, Belleville's in the county, isn't it?
Belleville is not in the county.
Okay. So that's Wayne County. So even for them, it's because of our tuition rate structure, they're still getting a deal compared with what their per pupil funding that they're allocated?
So when Belleville is coming to us, they are certainly paying more for classes than they did at Wayne County, because at Wayne County, they were paying in district tuition.
Right.
The tuition difference of out-of-district to in district is well worth what they're getting on this campus, in terms of the class offerings, in terms of the support that they're getting from faculty, the students, and they bring their advisor, they bring a staff person with them, they are loving it on our campus.
Clearly, they see a significant value.
Value, yes, very much a value.
Thank you.
In terms of the programming that we offer and the options that we're providing to students and the quality of instruction.
And still, they're able to do that within their state allocation?
Yes, absolutely.
Okay.
So they can have a student be full-time with us for fall semester or winter semester, and they are still going to have funds available left over to go back to the school.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
So are they, are they qualified to get like scholarship funding if they're duly enrolled, or that, or is that only for a straight student that just comes in for...
So you have to be, you have to be a high school graduate or have a GED to get any kind of federal financial aid?
Okay. I thought so, but I never asked, so I didn't. Thank you.
Any other questions?
So the statistics that you presented showed a marked decline in the number of students who are enrolled in that virtual delivery. Is there any thought at some point of sunsetting that particular delivery? It doesn't seem to be tremendously popular among students.
That would be a question for EVP Tucker.
Sorry, I was adjusting a question from... Midnight born, get your pizza question.
Sure.
You're gonna be in trouble over here.
The virtual modality, the delivery, does not, it seems to have declined in enrollment, like markedly over the past four, five years. Is there thought of eliminating that?
There are some areas that prefer it. There are other areas who are moving away from it. An example would be that we used to offer some math virtual classes. Math post-COVID, this really is not working, so math has done away with their virtual options. But there are other areas that like it and want to maintain it. So really leaving it up to the discipline to ensure that faculty think it works and that it's successful. So I would see that there's probably going to continue to be a decline, because those areas that like it are kind of down niche. The other areas are saying, hey, this isn't working from a pedagogy perspective and a student success perspective.
Thank you.
I may have many more questions as I look closely at the different programs, because there's certain programs that I'm looking at carefully. Nursing, which I think view as one of our successful programs, and it's certainly a high-demand area for people that are graduating with nursing degrees. I'm seeing actually a decline over the five years from twenty-one hundred enrollments now to nineteen hundred enrollments. Is the, are we capped because of facilities, faculty? I mean, what's, what's the cap? I know there's a waiting list for, there are more people applying for our nursing program than can get in. And I'm wondering if there's any way to address, if there's, if there's sufficient demand for this high-demand occupation, if there's any way that we can address being able to meet that need as a board or as a college.
So you can see generally, it's about nine fifty, nine sixty. I think, if I'm correct, I think in 2021, we had a jump. We had actually a grant that the state said you could have a few more students because we're limited by...
What page are you on?
The fifty.
Are you looking at this? I'm looking at annual, annual page twenty-eight. Annual page twenty-eight.
So again, that, it's been fairly consistent about that nineteen hundred. I think, Brandon, if that's correct, I think we had, didn't we have about, five years ago, we had a grant where they let us for one year kind of admit a few more students? Because it is, we are limited by our clinical spots, but I'll let...
We are. I know clinical spots are a constraint, yeah.
We are. I mean, the current enrollment is, I wouldn't say is our cap, but is near our cap. We did have, to Provost Blakey's comment, we've had some state programs, AD and the BSN program, which allows students to start here, be able to go to Easter, get their BSN program. So we've had some jumps there. That was literally a one- or two-year, one-year with a one-year extension funding from the state that's no longer in the budget. So I would see us being probably right around this, give or take fifty enrollments, probably, you know, as our plateau, because we are limited by clinical spots, but also the state board of nursing. I think it's two hundred and eighty spots that we have across our nursing programs that we can't exceed without going back for additional approval, which would require double the amount of faculty usually, because it's an eight-to-one ratio.
Our waitlist is what, a year long?
I believe that our waitlist is that long.
I think they've gone to...
We don't have a waitlist.
They go to academic admissions. They have to demonstrate academic capability. Yeah.
So our health programs are considered competitive admissions. They're considered a second tier. We don't have waitlist anymore. So each year, a student wants to apply to the program, they apply, and we, we have a very rigorous point scale based on their prerequisite courses, GPAs they have, and so based on how many students we're admitting, a certain number of students are admitted. The nursing student actually admits students for the fall semester and the winter semester. The other health programs have a one admission once a year. But as EVP Tucker said, we do have more applications than we have spots, but we no longer have a waitlist where people are on the waitlist for two or three years. It's just, there's a competitive admission process. But certainly, I would say since COVID, our health applications across the board, we're not getting as many. I think we're starting to see a little bit uptick, but based on all the things that happened during COVID, I think people were like, I don't want to work in healthcare. And so we saw a decline, but I think we are starting to kind of get through that a little bit and starting to see the applications pick up again.
I've spoken to some nurses and just asked them, you know, what's going on, how you feel about what's, you know, your job and stuff, where you're working. And basically, they said that there's not enough nurses.
There's a shortage.
There's a significant shortage.
Shortage, and everyone feels overwhelmed.
There is a huge shortage. And I think there was a lot of people that, well, just same with teachers, a lot of people, teachers retired during COVID, I think healthcare people retired during COVID, so yes, there's definitely shortages.
Thank you.
Well, I'm, I'm set, no more questions. But it's something that concerns me is how, what we can do at this college to help meet the need in our society for more nurses. And I don't know, there are clearly limits, and it's certainly something that, fortunately, I'm married to somebody who can give me a lot of places to go to look at possible answers to my questions. But it's something that I'd like to spend some energy personally, trying to figure out a way that we could step up and help, help our country and our society with what we do here.
Understood.
Did you have a question, Ruth?
A response to David and a question. One thing we have done is the, I shouldn't say dummies, but the...
Simulation.
Simulation.
Technology.
Yeah, has really helped because it counts as clinical. So it, it gets us a little bit more clinical and a few more people in there. I mean, that's one thing we've done. It hasn't solved the problem, but it's that kind of thing that we go on. Is this the time of year when we find out what departments and programs are thriving and which ones aren't?
That information is in the... It's in here? In the summary.
Okay, good. Thank you.
You're welcome. I'm sorry, no, we can't.
Would you ask Linda, soon as I get up? Let's take a...
Sure. Do you need five or ten minutes? Five minutes? Sure, let's take a five-minute break right now then, because we're switching then.
And then the party's really gonna get started.
So we'll reconvene at seven thirty-five. Sounds good. I'm going. All right, we are back in order. Our next report, Academic Success Initiatives Update.
We're excited to kick off the second half focused on what we are presently going to do to support students, right? And what we have on the horizon. It's important to note that as an institution, while we do a lot across the college from a practice perspective, we are fortunate to have board policy that really anchors us to ensure that student success at the forefront. And in front of you tonight are just six policies that really guide the work that we do. And our goal tonight, my colleague and I, too, is to show you a little bit more behind the hood of what's going on around student success here at WCC.
So one of the first things we're gonna talk about is our student graduation rates. And here's winter coming. So the graduation rate calculation is defined by the Department of Education. We report it, it's reported to IPEDS annually, which is the Integrated Post-Secondary Data System. Each fall, we have to determine a graduation cohort. The feds define that as their first time in any college, they're enrolled in the fall semester as a full-time student, twelve or more credits, and they are degree-seeking. So if you think about what we just had for the fall profile, you saw we're running about twenty-five percent of our students are full-time. Now we're up to twenty-eight percent. But that right there, automatically, we're cutting out seventy-five percent of our students because if they're not full-time in the first semester, they will not be in the graduation cohort. So that kind of, you know, we're narrowing that group down. And so again, it's first time in college, and then they're also degree-seeking. So for the graduation cohort, what we report is the percentage of students who are earning a certificate or degree within a hundred and fifty percent of the time for a degree. So if I am pursuing a one-year certificate, which is what the Michigan Transfer Associate would be, or transfer Michigan, transfer...
Agreed. Agreed, MTA?
Or MTA certificate, that would, the student would have one point five years to complete that one-year certificate, to be reported as a successful grad rate. If they're pursuing a two-year associate degree, they have three years. So at the three years is when we're calculating and reporting that graduation rate. We also continue to report at the two-hundred percent graduation rate, and we also calculate a transfer out rate. Universities who are having students pursuing four-year degrees are reporting at the six-year mark and the eight-year mark.
Transfer out, what, transfer to a university?
Yes, transfer to a university, yes. So in 2017, our graduation rate was sixteen percent. You know, we had concerns about that. We knew that, you know, if you just looked up Washtenaw grad rate, it popped up on the web at sixteen percent. And so we decided that we wanted to make, increase that. We wanted to say, you know, we want to focus on getting students and increasing that rate. So we knew that students that were entering in fall of seventeen would be measured in 2020, again, three years out, they have three years to complete that degree. And so we started a campaign. Kim Hearn's was here at the time. We set a campaign to raise our graduation rate to twenty percent by 2020. We went around campus, we did lots of presentations. I can tell you that when we set that goal, I thought we were out of our minds, because we had been at, we had, it was very ambitious. We had been in the middle teens forever. When we went around and talked to groups, they're like, eh, our students don't want to graduate, what are you talking about? But it was like, nope, we can do this. So again, we did presentations to faculty, we talked about the importance of completion. We received, and we applied for and received a five-year Title III grant. That grant specifically... That grant specifically had the goal of us increasing our graduation rate. We came up with, we implemented a new advising model where we actually did assigned advisors. We began building degree plans and degree works. We also started auto awarding of degrees for our financial aid students. And with that focus on graduation, when we've completed 2020, our graduation rate was 27%. What a surprise. But we've continued to focus on graduation. Our latest graduation rate for the cohort that entered in fall of '21, which was just reported in our 25 IPEDS, was 33%. Plus, we had a transfer out rate. So again, those, that transfer out rate is above and beyond the graduation rate. So, and then when we reported for the 2020 cohort, we were at 30%, and that 200% graduation rate was at 36. So you can see, with that focus on graduation, we've continued to increase our numbers. We, again, we do our assigned advisors. As every new student comes in, they get a two semester plan that's built by that, by the advisor. Financial aid, another thing that's, I think, helped is financial aid only paying for courses in their program of study. And again, auto awarding those degrees and certificates, which is because sometimes students don't think to apply for graduation, but we auto award those, and I think that's helped tremendously. But let's look at how do we look like compared to some of our comparable cohorts? So Michigan community college graduation rates are low. One study showed that 27% graduated within six years. So that's not even the three-year rate, right? The three-year rate? So at the six-year rate, only 27% were graduating. That ranked Michigan 49th nationally. So our other schools, so this is the fall '21 cohort, this is a more recent cohort, and you can see that we are running far ahead of some of our colleagues. So again, I'm very proud of our team and what we've been able to do when we focused on students and graduating. And so when we focused on those, you know, that grad cohort, all those things that we do impact all the students. So even if they're coming in and they're part-time, they're not part of the grad cohort, we're still doing all those things to help them graduate. They're meeting with an advisor, they're getting a plan. So we're still, even though they're not part of the grad cohort, all those things we've put in place are also success things that happen with students across the board. So I think we're doing a really good job with that.
I know. That's one of the reasons.
So.
Just takes the cake.
So the Michigan Reconnect, which PP Jennings talked about a little bit ago, talked about, you know, focused on students who are 25 and plus. Again, the state's 60 by 30, wanting to have 60% of adults age 25 and older to have some kind of credential by 2030. We had to provide the data that, what do our, what is our adult completion look like? So all schools had to submit that data, and the state said, okay, your target rate for the adult completion is going to be 38% based on the data that you have already. And so in the first Reconnect cohort, and the student has, again, four years to complete because they could go part-time, they might be coming in with some credits. Our two-year completion rate was at 32. At three years, we're at 43. So we anticipate our four-year completion rate will be above 47%. So again, they set the target of 38, and we anticipate we'll be at 47. So we're well ahead of the completion rate. Now, there's something, when you, when we're really successful like that, they expect you to keep going. So they're expecting us that, oh, you're at 47, now we want you to be at 49 next year. And again, you know, I'm a little bit concerned about that because as students, as we rolled out Reconnect, we had all these students like, oh, gosh, I don't have any financial aid, but now I can go back to school and my school be paid for. A lot of those individuals came back, they've graduated. I don't know that that success will continue on, but we will keep trying. So statewide, all the graduates is a little over 13,000. We have over 1,200 of those Reconnect graduates. Washington has the highest number of Reconnect graduates among all the participating colleges across the state of Michigan.
Wow. That's great.
She's absolutely right.
Yeah, it's great.
You get it now. Any questions? Otherwise, we'll go on to the next piece.
Is it just community colleges that?
At Reconnect, yes.
With Reconnect?
Yes.
Universities.
So I know when the Reconnect program came out, there, the state released statistics about how many people had applied to it and been approved, and there was a giant difference between the number of people who had been approved to go into the program and the number of people who actually did. So my question is, do we have any insight into the people who, students in, say, for example, in Washington County, in our district, who applied and were approved but did not ultimately enroll?
So we get all that data. We get that data from the state. We do outreach to them. We also, as students apply, if they apply and they are 25 and older and they've been in, they live in the state of Michigan, we also send them information about, you may be eligible for the Reconnect program, here's the link to go apply for that. But as the state, as students applied, and again, there was a big, lots of people applied at the very beginning, we do outreach to those individuals to encourage them and walk them through the next steps of what it takes to get enrolled. So we do aggressive outreach to them and outreach to students who we think might be eligible and encourage them to apply.
Do you have any insight into the success rate for that effort? I mean, how many of those people are you actually able to enroll?
I know at one point, we were, we were the, we were enrolling the highest percentage of students who were applying. So we had the highest, like, capture rate of the ones who were applying that were actually enrolling. I don't know what that, what those numbers look like most recently, but at the beginning, we were certainly running ahead of other schools in getting students to enroll.
Do you have any insight into what is preventing those students from actually enrolling or completing a program?
Mr. Jennings?
As a matter of fact, on, we just had two virtual sessions, one on Tuesday and one on Wednesday. So that group that has not actually enrolled, we reach out to them, we have these sessions. Our rate of students going, the other night, we had 35 students sign up, we had 23 students show up. We have 18 students who actually enrolled within the last couple of days because of that. So when we can get them and talk to them about what we have to offer for resources, we're doing well. We recognize there was a change in Reconnect. Two years ago, students had to take six credits. They moved it to like, you can just take one credit. So we've seen more students show up, but, you know, it runs the caveat of, I'm working multiple jobs. Then we tell them, hey, we have childcare that we can, maybe can support you. So students will see us as an opportunity and a resource, so we're capturing more of those students. The 21, 24-year-old, unfortunately, that ended, and we get calls at least a couple times a day of students who heard about the expansion but are no longer eligible. So we're trying to work with them because there's other funding available through PEO, through our foundation scholarships. So we, once they, once they get attached to WCC, we do not let them go. We're trying to figure out how we can get them to become a student with us, so. And sometimes it takes just a little longer for students to get their life right, but again, we have 15-week, 12-week, 10 and a half, 10 weeks, seven. So we try to fit them in to at least take one credit. As soon as they take one credit, they can stay eligible for the program. So we continue to do that. So there's a lot of adults. So as we grow our dual-enrolled students, we also know there are adults out here who need to get, need to get retrained. They're 25, 25 years of age or older. Michigan is providing a way for them to pay for school, so we want to make sure they take advantage of it as well.
Thank you.
So once they're here, we want to make sure that they stay here. We just saw the success of completion. We want to kind of highlight for the board just a few initiatives that are currently in play or that are planned to support students. The first being our Academic Success Center. You might remember, two years ago, we reord this area to be very focused on supporting students across all disciplines, but in a very intentional way. And our Academic Success Center has its own mission statement, which supports the overall college. And they believe every student that comes through their doors, that their responsibility is to guide them to acquire the skills, the knowledge, and the materials, right, that they need to accomplish their educational goals. The Academic Success Center offers a variety of two services. The top two services that they do offer are supplemental instruction and tutoring. And how that goes is that a student is assigned a tutor, assigned tutor that will attend class with them, as well as hold additional study sessions, individual and group, outside of class hours. They, they know the material either because they've taken a class and got an A, or because they're a part-time tutor in our ASC, and they're really able to be there to build upon the concepts that they learn in the classroom and both individual and a group setting. Additionally, students says, I don't want an SI tutor, but I want to just be able to come to tutoring. We offer tutoring in a number of ways, drop-in, by appointment, and even virtually after-hours, and that's something that we've expanded over the last couple of years with our growth in online. And that team is made up of a variety of supports. We presently have 32 tutors. That is up from nine just a year ago. So we were very intentional when we made the transition from developmental education to corequisite education, which we'll talk about tonight, to assure that we had that support for students, right, outside of class. And the state of Michigan has said, this is something that we want to invest in. So we actually have nearly $600,000 in a grant that is providing support to hire more tutors. And those tutors are either part-time, or they're our math part-time faculty that are spending an hour or two a week in the ASC. In addition, our math faculty have been doing office hours in the ASC. And this has become a hot treat, where now other disciplines are saying, can we do our office hours in ASC as well? So now we're having other instructors from other departments say, hey, I want to spend an hour or two where I can meet students in an individual or group setting. We have six lab associates that support students if they're having computer issues. And then we actually have one of our math faculty who is conducting a weekly support group, study group for Math 125X, and our Math 4099, which is our, our non-credit support prior to them entering into the co-rec or expanded support model, is actually offered in one of the tutoring rooms in the ASC. And just over this past semester, we offered 21 SI sessions. Those are partnering with the academic areas and being able to supplement what they're learning in the classroom. One might say, when does tutoring happen, right? So we've also expanded our hours, nine to seven, Monday through Thursday, and Friday, nine to one. People do actually show up on a Friday to get tutoring. And then, of course, we have tutoring available around the clock. We have a partnership with Tutor.com that provides students, literally, I think, we get a report every week, 3:30 in the morning, someone got tutoring just over the last few weeks. And that really meets students where they're at. And one might say, well, are they happy? It has like a 97% satisfaction rate. So students are able to get tutoring and support at literally any time throughout the day.
Where is this?
This is GM, the second floor, which used to be our learning commons. So there's a bank of computers to your right, and then the left side is kind of open area. And then they actually have two remodel classrooms as part of our Classroom Enhancement Project on the second floor that they also use for tutoring. I want to another way that we support students.
So early alerts, we talked a little bit earlier this year when we talked about kind of expanding the Salesforce contract. So some of our, the student success updates that we rolled out in fall of '12. And so the early alerts are used by faculty to report early absences, if they've identified the student who might need for support, like for books, childcare, transportation, or they can send it for encouragement. So again, we ran a pilot over the summer. We used, we got a lot of faculty feedback on how the early alerts worked. We ran the pilot with our corequisite access support classes that Brandon will talk about shortly. We expanded it to all classes for fall of '25. So we did training during fall in-service. We encouraged submissions as early as the first day. If a student doesn't show up the first day of class, if our, we can provide support to them immediately, they have a much better chance of being successful as opposed to hearing about it, you know, three weeks in. The early alerts also provide faculty the option to give a personalized message. These communications will go to our coaches or other support services, like our Student Resource Center. The faculty receive a message back from the support area of the outreach that was provided to the students, so that provides that close-back loop. And the system also provided for positive nudges. So the early alert categories that we're using fall under academic capacity. Is a student perhaps having difficulty with the concept, the course requirement, maybe we need to connect them to the Academic Success Center or some tutoring services. Academic engagement, are they missing? Do they need some transportation assistance? Do they have some other issues that are keeping them from actually attending and participating in class? They can also note non-academic resources. Does the student need a Student Resource Center? We have our food pantry, we have childcare, we provide transportation, we provide other resources through the Student Resource Center, housing, we can help them find housing. Again, maybe connecting them to the Academic Success Center, our Writing Center, Learning Support Services, perhaps the student needs accommodations and they haven't signed up for those accommodations. So again, all those different ways that we can, again, identify early that the student might need support and connect them to the resources that we have on our campus. And then there's also generic. It might be just, hey, I'm just reaching out to you to let you know I'm thinking about you. So one thing that we do is we have built into the system email reminders. So no matter if the student, the faculty is teaching a 15-week class, a 10-week class, a five-week class, they're going to get reminders that say, hey, it's the first day of the semester, do you want to send some early alerts? It's the eighth day, or it's the midpoint, it's coming up on the end of the semester. The reminder goes off to the faculty, hey, this might be a good time to send, use early alerts. And they're, the alert message actually has a link that they can just click on and access the early alert system. What I think is exciting news is we found very early success. We know that if we can get an alert on a student, we have a much better chance of putting some wraparound services and having that student be successful. So as for the fall semester, as of November 11th, excuse me, yeah, November 10th, when we ran this, we had over 2,800 alerts that had been submitted for almost 1,700 students. When we compare to the same point in time for the fall '24 semester, where we had 1,183 alerts for 973 students, you can see that we've had a 74% increase in the number of students that we are getting alerts on, and 137% increase in the actual number of alerts. So we're very happy with how faculty are using the alert system more frequently. I want to give kudos to our six success coaches. We have a coach that helps our reach students who are specifically, that's grant-supported. Those are students who have aged out of the foster care system. We have, we are happy MCAN, Michigan College Access Network, provided the opportunity for colleges to get a coach that would specifically support the Reconnect 24, 21 to 24 expansion students that we talked about earlier. We recently brought on a coach to help with our early middle college and dual-enrolled students. So again, as we get early alerts from those individuals, we reach out to that partner to help provide support to them. We have a coach that's supporting students in our additional support English and math courses, which Brandon will talk about shortly. We have a coach for our CTE populations, our Career and Technical Education classes, and then we have a coach for our other populations. and then we have a coach for our other populations.
Board, I remember, um, a year ago, um, to be in compliance with the state, we moved from, uh, what was known as standalone developmental education to what is called prerequisite and as we term it, expanded support. To remind the board, uh, really the difference between dev ed and co-rec, uh, dev ed is a traditional approach where students enter into remedial courses, uh, prior to being able to enroll in college-level courses. The goal is to strengthen kind of those foundational skills before they enter into those gateway courses in English and math. But what is found nationally, not just here in Washtenaw, is that oftentimes students, um, are delayed progression, that we have increased attrition, and that it's extended time. Not at any fault of the faculty, the faculty, uh, work really hard to try to get students there. But oftentimes, students will stay in dev ed for anywhere from one semester up to four years. So the state said, you know, no more, we don't want to have this model here in Michigan. And they followed other states, right, that have been doing this for many years. And they said, the entire state of Michigan needs to move to what's called prerequisite education. And that's really placing students in college-level courses with the supplement, e-either an additional course that's an add-on that gives them extra time, or expanding the actual college-level course with extended time to offer up that additional support. Uh, and what we have found, which we'll talk about tonight, um, is kind of, um, what that looked like, um, after really that first term. So here at WCC, prior to the switch, uh, which was effective winter twenty-twenty-five, um, we had, um, four offerings or five offerings of English, right? Uh, all dev ed, oh-five-oh, oh-five-one, oh-seven-five, oh-nine-oh, and oh-nine-one. And then we had three offerings of math, oh-six-seven, oh-nine-seven, and oh-nine-nine. Students who, um, came into the college at not college level, six and six, six in reading and writing, six in math. We placed in these dev ed sequences with the goal of being able to raise their score. You might ask, okay, well, what's the difference between oh-five-oh and oh-seven-five? Well, it depends on the level of competency of that student is where they would place, with the goal of being able to take the next course, the next course, and eventually get to college level. Um, as I mentioned, the state of Michigan, um, kind of put a pronouncing out there, they, they tied the dollars of reconnect to you no longer offering, um, dev ed. We were, um, the last institution to be able to, um, take up the banner and run with it, saying, okay, we're going to move to this new model. And I do, as we've given kudos all night, I've got to give, uh, kudos to our faculty who worked really hard and continue to work hard, uh, in both English and math to ensure that we're supporting students. Uh, that work, um, first started with the creation of a new math course, which is really designed for those lower-level students who really had kind of a basic level of math and really needed to get to college level, math one sixty-eight. And then the refinement of some existing S and X sections that we offered. Uh, S being kind of supplemental, and X, of course, meaning extra support. Same thing, but a different model, right? Estimate that I was taking one course, and then I would have an extra course as a supplement, oftentimes in the same week, or X meaning that I took the regular college course and I added more time. And, and this, this was, um, it, it was a journey, right, for, for our faculty and for our students. And I want to be able to show kind of, uh, the initial performance, um, in comparison to what it used to be, to what it is now. Yes, sir.
Those levels of math courses have names?
They do. They do, they're, they're, yes.
Names that we would recognize?
Like intermediate algebra would be one example of a name.
Okay.
Good question. So when we look at pre, the switch to now, looking at winter twenty-twenty-four as an example, English, um, which, a- as I mentioned, a number of courses you could take with the goal of getting to the college-level course one-eleven. Students in the winter of twenty-twenty-four, there was a total of a hundred and sixty-five students across those five courses that were looking to get into English one-eleven. And oftentimes, we look at success as, were they successful in the dev ed course? In many cases, you had students that would have anywhere from a fifty to seventy percent success rate in the dev ed course they were taking. But many of those students failed to get to the college-level course that they desired or needed to be. So here you see represented five courses, student in winter twenty-twenty-four, who was successful at not only passing the remedial course, but actually being successful when they took the college-level course and actually passed. Fifteen percent of students that started in that dev ed sequence actually got to one-eleven and were successful. Eighty-five percent did not. When you look at math, like kind of the two pathways where they wanted to go to one-twenty-five, or in this case, wanted to go to one-sixty. Two hundred and ninety-two students wanted to get to one-twenty-five. Twelve percent of them were actually successful at getting to one-twenty-five and passing. And likewise, in one-sixty, there were a hundred and twenty students, and nineteen percent that were actually successful. So respectfully, eighty-eight percent and eighty-one percent were not. Going back to, oftentimes, we looked at success as, were they successful in the dev ed sequence? Yes, fifty to seventy percent on average. But they, many of them were not successful when they got to college level with actually being successful. So we went down and we made major changes. Our faculty worked really hard, um, and when I say hard, really, really hard, to ensure that they could support students. Um, and as we mentioned to the board a year ago, we made a commitment that we would meet faculty in locked arms and assure that we would do everything we could to support students, i.e., um, the reorganization of the Academic Success Center with adding three times the amount of tutors and SI leaders. Our first kind of comparison of student success is in winter twenty-twenty-five. That is the first semester in which we moved to prerequisite and expanded support. For students who took English one-eleven S, that is the supplemental course to one-eleven, we had a hundred and eighty-one students who took that, seventy-three percent were successful. Twenty-seven percent were not. When we look at those who took one-twenty-five X, hundred and sixteen students, eighty-six percent were successful, fourteen percent were not. When we look at one-sixty X, hundred and eight students, eighty-three percent were successful, seventeen percent were not. And when we look at one-sixty-eight, eighty-nine students, and remember, this is the course that was taking, um, individuals who had really, really basic math. Fifty-nine percent were successful, forty-one percent were not. And so we know, and we've been working, um, faculty and staff to look at all of these, but one-sixty-eight, of course, to ensure that we continue to provide that support. But even in comparison, someone that was coming in at these other levels, they, they did not make it to college level in nearly the amount of time, this is one semester. Um, so are we done? No. Do we still have a lot of opportunity? Absolutely. Are we still working with students? Because we don't want anybody to not be successful, right? But we know that just in the first semester, uh, we'll continue to provide this, you know, because we're tracking this, uh, we know that it's, it's working. We just have to continue to support faculty who eventually support our students. So one would say, what's next, right? Then we want to continue to expand the utilization of our Academic Success Center. Um, clearly, having faculty in the ASC doing office hours, having those study sessions, it is working. Trustee, I hear.
Go back, one.
I can.
Um, what is the, uh, what level, what am I trying to say? When a student comes, how do they get into, say, one-eleven S? Do they take a test for that, or can any student take one-eleven S?
So you either can place into it because you're not at six and six, which was our, kind of our standardized, you know, reading, writing, and math. Or we do have some students that say, I place in one-eleven without the support, but I want to take it.
Yeah, but what if I, what if I'm not, what if I'm at four instead of six? Can I take one-eleven S?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, you can.
So there's no prereq for taking it? Okay, um.
Yes, yes, there is, I'm sorry. There is a prereq for taking it.
The student has, could be at level three or four.
Yep.
Or two, so we do have some students, not very many. So students come in, um, you know, they can use their high school GPA, but we have students who come in who take the Accuplacer. If they're at level one, which means they're, they have like elementary level reading and writing skills, we will partner and, um, work, have them work with Washtenaw Literacy. So they do have to be at least ready to, so they have to be at that three, four level.
Okay.
Level two, so if they're at level one, um, or, or two in reading, one or two in reading, um, or less than three in writing, we will, um, we will work with Washtenaw Literacy.
Um, and also, um, I, I happen to know someone in the math department, who taught, uh, which one of those math classes is the new one?
What, sixty-eight?
Yeah, um, in the winter, um, the students in that one-sixty-eight class had taken math oh-six-seven or oh-nine-seven or oh-nine-nine. So they had taken a remedial math course before they got to one-sixty-eight. So your true test won't happen until you have students in one-sixty-eight who had no remedial math.
So we read an analysis on those students. Uh, there were not as many as we thought, there was a five percent variance. So the students who had, uh, not taken any remedial prior to that were about five, it was five percent lower. So it was a total of like from fifty-nine to fifty-six or fifty-three percent. So, and, and we saw that, because that was a question of the faculty, is that, okay, even on the English side, if you took oh-five-oh or oh-five-one, and are we measuring this? Um, even with extracting those out, there was only a five percent variance. So there were still high, high success rates.
It'll be interesting to see what, what fall and winter.
By itself.
Continue to show.
Absolutely, for sure.
I'm looking at, on the math, you had four hundred twelve people that took either one-twenty-five or one-sixty in winter of twenty-twenty-four. And then in winter of twenty-twenty-five, if you'd look at all three of those, only three hundred thirteen. So I'm wondering, a hundred students, so a twenty-five percent drop in actual enrollees, where are those people going?
Two things, either they, um, already went through the dev ed sequence and are now in college level, or, um, depending on high school GPA, um, we moved, uh, now, almost two years ago, almost?
That's wrong.
Yeah, um, last fall, from the three-point oh to two-point five. So some of them might have placed in to college level. So it wasn't that we necessarily lost the enrollment because we did it, but they might have already gone to college level either because the old dev ed got them there, or because their high school GPA allowed them to place in the college level.
So you're saying we, we haven't lost very many students because of this?
Not at all.
No students?
I wouldn't say no students, but I, I think it's been very minimal. We looked at kind of the comparison.
We don't, we don't know how many students we've lost.
That we lost because of this change? Um, no, but I, I wouldn't, from, from our analysis of looking at this, I, I wouldn't say that we lost many, but we don't know the exact number. So if you want the exact number, we don't have that, not today.
Angela?
Um, let's listen out on this. Um, your report on the academic support interventions, and I had a thought. I know we've talked about this in the past, past years. Um, these students would be in the other category. Students that have once been incarcerated, do we capture that number? Like, how many of those that we get that come here to this school that had that past? You know, and they need to get, uh, you know, educational training, get the support, the wraparound services and like that. Do we have any numbers on that?
That's not a question that we ask on the app. Uh, we do have returning citizens, and we have partnerships with the sheriff's office where we'll have, um, sessions where those students can come in and get assigned to an advisor to get, um, talk about what program they want to. But we don't ask that question on the app, uh, if they're, you know, have prior kind of felonies or incarcerations or anything.
And in addition to that, we are part of the re-entry coalition that Washtenaw County has. Um, they actually just emailed just a few weeks ago to, um, see if we could have our recruitment team come out, because they do sessions out in the community for, once they've been released. Um, and I know that, uh, Dee Leskovich and his team, uh, did support that and continue to support that initiative.
Different levels, academic levels, so our advisors then, um, they will be able to, gosh, that's not right. Meet them where they're at, because
Yes.
That, that's what I was trying to say.
Yes.
Meet them where they're at, because the knowledge level is going to be obviously a lot different than another student coming in that had had that experience.
Right, we have students.
Sensitivity.
We have students coming in at all different kind of levels, and, um, our advisors work to help them get into the classes that they need to have.
Okay, I agree, thank you.
So this is kind of a follow-on to trustee DeVarty's question regarding, um, the population of students enrolled in these new, um, math courses. Every student who comes in here takes a placement test for these English and math courses, correct?
There's multiple measures of assessment. So it could be that they take a placement test, it could be that they write an essay, for example, and it also could be their high school GPA.
Okay, so of the students who take placement tests, are we seeing an increase in the number of students who are not college-ready? Or is that number decreasing?
Highly, the student services would have a better answer to that than me.
Nope.
But I'm not sure if we could.
So that's, um, in the fall profile, um, in the, uh, near the back, we have, we talk about the students that come in and the students who do assessment. Uh, we are, as, um, Brandon said, we do do multiple measures. And so as we're using, like, you know, the high school GPA might be a predictor, they can do the writing sample, um, or they can take the Accuplacer. Um, I don't know that we've seen increased lo- lower levels. Um, we have, because as we adjusted our GPA, we had less students who needed to actually take the placement test. Uh, we have not seen a fall off from our success rates.
Thank you.
Sir.
I just want to add, I just did a quick math on this, or arithmetic. From that first, I, I saw a drop in numbers, total numbers, from four-twelve to three-thirteen. And was it three-thirteen, I think? Yeah, so I was thinking, we lost a hundred students, but then I looked at the success rate, and we went to, from the pass on the upper, the twenty-twenty-four, roughly fifty-nine success passes, success rate, fifty-nine individuals, to two-hundred to 233 individual passing in the 2025. So even with that hu- drop in 100 people taking this from 2024 to 2025, we saw a significant, like a quadrupling or tripling, no, a quadrupling of success, which I think is wonderful. It's still, I'm wondering where those other 100 students, are they just deciding not to take math? Are they deciding that it's not for me? Um, you know, that's, that's my worry, but at the same time, I am noting significant increase in success.
Absolutely. And of course, we still have ways to go, right? It's still early, uh, and we're still constantly assessing and saying, okay, what worked, what didn't, how do we get better? So our goal, uh, over the next academic year, the one we're currently in, is to continue to Christianization of the ASC. We know that that's working. Um, continue to partner with faculty to not only offer their office hours, um, in the ASC, uh, but also, um, give insight to how we can better support students, uh, both in the classroom and outside. Uh, we're continuing to work to evaluate the success of English and math corequisite, um, and expanded support courses to make improvements as appropriate. What, what example is, uh, we had, um, a dev ed work group that met, um, bi-weekly, um, prior to us launching this and even when we launched it, they continued to meet. Uh, one of the findings that they recommended was, uh, math had chosen to utilize the X model, meaning that we're taking five or six hours in a course altogether throughout the week. English had the add-on model, which was the four contact hours in the college level course and then the two hours of support. Uh, they are, they are moving to the X model. And that, that, that was, I think, a lot from having those conversations with colleagues and say, how's it working? How's it not? Um, and I want to say they're moving in winter, in winter of 2026. So they made a significant shift, um, you know, pretty early on to say, oh, that's working. We want to emulate that. So, um, once again, kudos to the faculty, to, um, our, our deans, uh, Dean Nichols and Dean Schwab, as well as VP Jennings, who really have been working together to say, how do we ensure we support students? Uh, and lastly, um, Pearl was making showed us early alerts tonight. We want to continue to expand that. And, and we can see the jump that we have by giving all faculty, part-time and full-time access to that. And now it's a, a common conversation, uh, when we talk about student success.
So let's look, look at the, the tree book, the fall. And if we look at the English and college readiness, um, we're even from fall 24 to fall 25 in terms of enrollments.
What page, what page?
I'm sorry, sorry, sorry. Page 51 in the fall book. So you can see over five years, we have a three and a half percent increase in our, um, ACS in English enrollments. I'm sorry, page 51. So I'm looking at the enrollment and I'm looking in the, right in the middle, it has the English classes. And so you can see we've picked up enrollments from fall 24. We had 2684 English enrollments and this fall we had 2,859 enrollments. And if you look at the next page, on page 53, and we look at our math enrollments, um, we're down slightly in terms of fall 24 to fall 25, but if we look over five years, we've gained 12 and a half percent in our math enrollments. So I am confident that we are not losing students from this new model. Um, they're able to access the college level classes more quickly and we're seeing, um, good success rates.
You know how many students score one and two and three on your tests?
It's just one and two. Uh, it's just a, a, a handful. We don't have very many at all. Just a handful.
We send them to?
To Washtenaw Literacy.
Washtenaw Literacy.
Sometimes they'll come through, um, work, work through our GED program, but we also are working with, um, because again, sometimes that literacy, um, sometimes we're testing to see if there might be more appropriate for our ESL classes, depending on why they might be testing low. But, um, again, it's only a couple, one or two in a given semester that will test that low.
Do any of them test that low and have a high school diploma?
Yes.
WTMC.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Wow. Yeah, really good.
Thank you. Any questions?
Any other questions?
Thank you for your leadership, Brandon. So if I may.
Yeah.
Um, again, I'd like to thank the three leaders of our academic, um, and student success. The three of them lead this initiative and they really do an outstanding job as well as the deans that support all of them and the faculty and staff. But I'd also like to thank the board. There are a lot of things you approved that we paid for as far as being able to use Target X, as far as the early alert system. There are, there are several things that you worked with us to purchase and be able to implement, and that certainly has helped us. And I also would like to point out that when we went through the strategic planning process, we did talk to you about how data was, we were going to make better data-driven decisions. And you, for the, almost all of you have been on the board for a long time. And I think you can see the use of data, how it's improved over the years. Um, so I hope that, and again, thank you because you supported that direction. So, um, thank you so much.
Sure. Unless there's any other questions? Hearing none, seeing none?
Moved to, we adjourn?
For. Okay. All in favor of say aye?
Aye.
Right. Any opposed? Getting adjourned.